Good evening and welcome to the February 22 regular meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Our prayers tonight and pledges from Councilman Sean Wright.
I bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for being with us this evening. Please help us make the decisions that you would like us to be made for the city of Murfreesboro. Please be with the leaders of our county, our state, and our federal government as they prepare to make decisions as well. Please be with those that need healing, Lord, both spoken and unspoken healing. Please be with those that are in pain and during the Lenten season, please be with, help those be closer to you. It is your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ms. Brown, were there any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, let's do new business. We have the rezoning of property on Medical Center Parkway. Mr. Blomley.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Shacklet and members of council. Pleasure to be with you tonight. Our one public hearing tonight is for the Fountains Development, which is located along the north side of Medical Center Parkway. It's in the area colored red on the map before you. It's about 31.3 acres. You can see it's a total of four parcels. Mr. Gravy owns two of those parcels and the city still owns two of the parcels, but Mr. Gravy has a contractual interest in the two remaining parcels, so he has standing to file for the rezoning application. Property is currently zoned MU and GDO III, MU being mixed-use district and also in the Gateway Design Overlay District number three. You'll see the area here is where Phase One is located. That is the existing Fountains at Gateway Development. Mr. Gravy has purchased this property and the city still owns those two properties. Due to the properties, his phases needing to stay on separate parcels, that is what spurred the discussion about the rezoning of the property. Because with our zoning regulations, the property lines create expectations with regards to landscaping, setbacks, various separations, and so we began to talk to Mr. Gravy and his team about rezoning the property for a planned development. So to allow a little bit of additional flexibility, to keep some of the property in different parcels without having to rub up against some of those requirements that those property lines bring. So he has filed an application to rezone the entire development, Phase One, Two, and Three, to PUD, Planned Unit District. The pattern book that has been included in your agenda materials details the uses that are proposed for each of those three phases. Of course, Phase One is already developed, so there's really no change to that existing Phase One portion of the development. The property would remain in the Gateway Design Overlay District number three. The Future Land Use Map, which was adopted last year, the updated Future Land Use Map, shows this area as being in the EG, Employment Generating Land Use Character. The EG, Employment Generating Land Use Character recommends uses such as office-type uses, various corporate employment-generating-type jobs with commercial and residential as secondary uses. And so there's no residential in the first phase, but Mr. Gravy is proposing residential in the second and third phases. And so, but he is proposing to put restrictions on that residential so that they're going to be for-sale units, and if any of them are rented out by the owners of those units, they would be managed by the Fountains team, and the minimum lease would be a minimum of one year so as not to be rented out as short-term rentals or Airbnbs. So the request is consistent with our Future Land Use Map, the Employment Generating Land Use Character. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on January the 10th and after the public hearing recommended its approval to you. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Mr. Tyler Thayer and Mr. Kevin Gunther of the design team representing Mr. Gravy and Hearthstone Properties have a brief presentation that they would like to give you before the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Welcome, Mr. Gunther.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Pleasure to be here. Kevin Gunther with Reagan Smith, representing the development team that I think is a very good team for a very good developer, and good to be here before you, Vice Mayor Shacklet and council members and city staff. So I will keep it brief, but we are certainly happy to answer any detailed questions that you might come up with on the project. We do feel that this master plan brings a very good mixed-use development before you, which is also something that is very much in keeping with the Gateway objectives of bringing economic vitality to the Gateway in the city and presenting a true mixed-use development project that has all the components of mixed-use, and that is office and retail and commercial and residential. We feel that, you know, Phase One of the Fountains is an exemplary project. We hope you see that the developer and the development team have executed on something that's very high quality, something that is providing a high value and amenity to the city. And then also, we feel that this project's going to add to those amenities, and I think you're all aware of some of the spaces that are there at Fountains Phase One, some of the pocket parks, the facilities that Scott Gravy has provided to the community, and those are going to continue into future phases of the project. So there was some mention of the exceptions that we are requesting with the PUD, and those are specifically related to the height of the buildings. We would like to allow for up to 150-foot height, which is consistent with the office and hotel part of the GDO III, but we'd like to also extend that to residential. As Mr. Blomley had mentioned, we'd like the flexibility to reduce setbacks of buildings and landscapes of the internal lot lines of the project because it's going to be developed as one big project. Lot lines are there really more for the allowance of financial and logistic development phases. And then we'd like to reduce the landscape in between some of the buildings and the frontage of buildings because we want to focus on those amenity spaces and the public You can see here, very quick color diagram of the phasing. The purple is existing Phase One. The pink is what would be immediately proceeded with as far as site plan approval and construction for Phase Two. The red piece towards the front is the boutique hotel that would come on shortly after Phase II-A is completed, and then that yellow portion is really anticipated for a future phase. With that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Tyler Thayer with Paradigm, and he'll describe some of the architectural components of the project.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here. My name is Tyler Thayer. I'm with Paradigm Studio, the architect on the Fountains of Gateway with Scott Gravy. It's a pleasure today to be able to just introduce briefly the architectural character of the Fountains of Gateway, which you are probably all familiar with, and where we are going in the future and where we hope that you agree will be a very exciting future for the Fountains of Gateway and Murfreesboro. On the screen is an existing building, one that I think exemplifies the architecture and the quality of materials that we've hoped to continue with the future phases, including masonry, glazing that allows a lot of natural light into the building, and other high-quality materials like metal panel that are durable and long-lasting. And so these, this is kind of, and also the lighting, I think, this building, which is the MMC Medical Office Building, along with the new restaurant on the below, is just a good example of the kind of quality that we hope to continue at the Fountains, and Scott Gravy is very interested in continuing these things, and he continues to travel and is actually traveling tonight, looking at new things that he wants to bring back to the Fountains and back to Murfreesboro. This is an image, a rendering, kind of a composite rendering. It's actually input into a photograph of the existing site of the Phase II-A building that is currently, or would be the first after the PUD is approved, would be the first building that we would come back through for site plan approval. This is a true mixed-use building. It is approximately 200,000 square feet. It is similar to the first larger building on the site, and then it will have retail at the first floor, followed by office on the first floor, the kind of the rear-back portion of that, and office on the second floor. What is new in this building is what we think is a key activation in a mixed-use site like the Fountains of Gateway, which is residential condos. These will be, are currently planned to be for-sale condos. It's three stories of these condos with large porches. One great thing that Scott would really love to do is not just be any ordinary multifamily development, but something that he would be proud to live in if he wasn't on his little piece of property out in Veterans. So he is really interested in producing something that he would love to be. So these porches are deep, they're large, they're going to have a lot of natural air, a lot of air ventilation and natural light, so it's almost like, you know, a front porch of a nice single-family home. But I think some of the marks of this is that it's going to continue the natural light, so glazing that allows a lot of natural light into the space, which is a better space. It's going to continue the masonry, so we're going to use a lot of the same masonry, the stones, the brick on the building, and then the metal, the black metal accents, a high-quality metal panel that will last generations to come. And I think one of the new things that we're experimenting on this, which would be new both to Murfreesboro and to the Fountains of Gateway, is a mass timber. And so if you look closely, there are some wood columns, but this building will be, is being designed and will use a mass-timber structural system. The first building was using concrete. This is a more sustainable alternative. It is also very beautiful, and so we hope to not only expose some of this on the outside, like those columns at the retail bay, but the residences on the inside will, and the office building and even the retail will have this natural wood material on display. And it's a white spruce, so it's a very beautiful material, and it looks great. And so then in the pattern book, you'll see images of what we're kind of dreaming of in the future. These buildings have not been designed yet, but we are looking at continuing, assuming that the mass timber works well, which we do believe. A boutique hotel that would continue the natural light through the glazing, but also the warm tones of the wood and also brick and masonry as well would continue. So we've provided a couple inspiration images of how we expect this architectural character to continue on the property. We, in the Phase II-B, the red portion that was on the bottom, which is the future, we also plan to bring what he's calling the alley or the district, and this will be an open-air, covered patio way with a lot of boutique retail, smaller retail that where smaller retail groups can come in, and it's more of a 30-by-30 square, has an opportunity to be on the Fountains of Gateway without having to rent a very large. So again, Scott Gravy's goal is to build kind of an ecosystem where smaller retailers and larger retailers can all exist, and the same thing for his office program. And then as we continue on, we plan to introduce more condominiums. You'll notice that we've requested the residential portion of this mixed-use to be able to match height with, if we were doing an office building. Office is allowed to go up to 150 feet and/or hospitals and those kind of uses. We're asking for the residential to be able to do this, and we have shown a few towers, these 150-foot towers on the site, that would be smaller in footprint to allow maximum views for all of them. Again, he's thinking through, how do we not just do any other kind of residential, but something that people would be proud to live in and something that would be very unique to the site? So this is just some images. These are a little larger in scale than the 150, but it kind of gives you an idea of the glazing and the masonry and the wood tones and the warmth. So don't be, I guess, thrown off by the scale of these. They're more so for the character of them. And then finally, we'll continue in Phase Three, more office, continue more office and mixed-use, and these are some other inspirations, also using masonry and warm wood tones, and this would be in the future. And I think that is all. And then at the end, I will note, at the very end of this PUD, we are proposing a boutique or kind of like a higher-end restaurant at the very, kind of the pinnacle of the, and it's the little square, that's about an 8,000, 10,000-square-foot restaurant. That'll probably be the last thing that we, that Scott develops on the site, because as we get the residences that are living there permanently, the office fully operational, we think we can, he will be able to sustain a higher-end restaurant at kind of the pinnacle of his property, and so we look forward to hopefully getting there sometime in the future. So I am here to answer any questions about the architecture or his plans for kind of activation of the site, and I'll end there. Thank you so much.
All right. Are there any questions from council before we have a public hearing?
All condos?
Currently, that is the plan, all condos and hotels, or hotel rooms. He is not allowing, I do believe it even says that they're, tell me, STRs are not allowed, so he is not putting STRs on there, but his boutique hotel would be short-term in nature because it's a hotel.
Thank you.
Yes. I said that right, right? Okay. Just want to make sure I got, what's in the book is correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll need to conduct a public hearing. Remind you of the parameters of the public hearing. If you want to speak as an individual, you have three minutes. If you're speaking as a group, you've got five. We'll open the public hearing on this rezoning. Seeing no one coming to the podium, we'll close the public hearing. We'll need to hear a motion on Ordinance 24OZ02.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, Ms. Brown.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have bleacher renovations. Mr. Hennessy.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present for your approval, the bleacher renovation or the contract for Tote Vine Enterprises for the bleacher renovations at Bradley Academy, Discovery School, Mitchell Nielsen, and Reeves Rogers Elementary Schools. Old wooden bleachers at these schools have worked well for many years, but they're no longer ADA compliant. These would be purchased through a co-op called the Interlocal Purchasing System. City's purchasing and legal departments have reviewed the contract. Murfreesboro City School Board approved it on February the 13th. The total expense, $316,794, will be funded by county shared bonds. Be glad to answer any questions that you have.
So moved. Second.
Motion in second, Ms. Brown.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
All right. The next item is bulk purchase of petroleum products contract renewal. This is Mr. Lingo.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor and members of council. I'm Colin Lingo, Assistant Director for Fleet Services. We have an amendment for the renewal of our contract for the purchase of bulk petroleum products from Hunter Oil for the use in all city vehicles and equipment to help maintain cost-effective maintenance and repairs. Using this contract agreement to purchase these consistently utilized bulk products minimizes the long-term cost of supplies. All expenditures are dependent on our department's needs and are funded through the Fleet Services operating budget. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, Ms. Brown.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Next item is Murfreesboro Transit Center Contingency Allowance Allocation. This is Mr. Gore.
Vice Mayor, members of city council?
Evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present this to you tonight. This is really a follow-up. This is not an action item. This is a, just a information, as we talked about at the January 25 council meeting, when you all had incorporated a pre-existing approved $700,000 owner's contingency and incorporated that into the transit center contract. We came, wanted to come back with you and show you the reporting, how this is being tracked. So we have the change control forms in your packet and the change control log. What you see on the slide here is really those three items, change control forms two through four, that amount to $47,737. Again, each one of those items is independent from the other, and they're each under $50,000, so these are approvable by Craig, and they come out of that contingency amount that's in the contract. So these get processed with pay applications through the AIA document, payment progress. So you can see, we started out with a contingency allowance of $700,000, and based on these approvals, we're down to $652,262, $263 rounded up. And this would be an ongoing reporting item that we would bring to you. Typically, I think it would be on the consent agenda, but I'm available for any questions if you have any, just so I know this is kind of a new, a new thing, and I don't want to confuse you, I want to make sure it's very clear.
Darren, thank you very much for putting this together and showing this as steps. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Well, I don't think we need approval on this.
Oh, we don't? Okay.
This is information.
Well, that's how much I like it.
Well, if the, we will, I will restate that if it's over $50,000, any particular items over $50,000, we will be coming to you for approval.
$47,000.
And if there's any time exten, well, these, the three, there's, if any one item's over $50,000, the aggregate may be over 50 if they're three independent, if that makes sense. And if there's any time extension involved with any of these two, we would have to request your approval. In this instance, there's no time addition to the contract, and each item was under $50,000, so it's a report only.
I retract my approval. Sorry, Darren.
No, 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 you're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gore.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Our next item, Lee Boye grater purchase. Mr. Hillis.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Shacklet, city council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. So what I have before you today for consideration for purchase is a Lee Boye road grater purchased from Power Equipment. You guys may or may not know that back during the winter storm, our road grater was involved in an automobile accident, which totaled the grater, so this is a replacement of that grater. We were working along Norfield Boulevard, and they were rear-ended, and, which totaled the grater, and we're here to replace that, of course. So what we, what we want to do, the total purchasing price of this Lee Boye grater is $241,612, and of course, will be paid for the risk money, risk management fund. This was, this will also be purchased under the Sourcewell contract, so I'm available for any questions if you guys have any.
Anybody give her?
Well, the operator was fine, but the gentleman that was struck the road grater did have to be transported, but to my knowledge, he's, he's okay.
Good, Eric.
If no other comments, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion in second, Ms. Brown.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Next item is contract for Gen Fair LLC Transportation. Mr. Bishu?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. The Transportation Department is recommending your approval of a contract with Gen Fair for the purchase of three electronic fare boxes, including fleet personnel training and extended warranties. In 2019, council approved the purchase of nine fare boxes for our existing fleet at the time. With the arrival of 12 new buses, we are in need of three additional fare boxes to eliminate the need for drivers to handle cash. The equipment, training, and extended warranty all qualify for federal and state funding. The total cost is $71,200, and the city's match is $7,120. The expenditure is accounted for in our department budget, and we recommend you approve the contract, and I'll take any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, Ms. Brown.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Didn't spend any money, so I guess you come back up here, Gore. Ow, Mr. Gore. Got to have something to vote on.
So moved.
Customer Information System, annual support contract. Mr. Gore.
Vice Mayor, council, again, thank you for the opportunity. This is the Water Resource Department's Customer Information System that we implemented back in 2014. We do have an ongoing annual maintenance fee, basically a software support maintenance fee. This fee for the next five years is $768,739. That's from 2024 through 2028. The 2024 cost is $139,122, and that is in our operating budget, but we would request approval for this five-year maintenance contract for our Customer Information Utility billing system. I'm available for questions if you have any.
So moved. Second.
Motion in second, Ms. Brown.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. We have the mayor's recommendations for, it looks like, reappointments to our building, Public Building Authority. They're in your packet. We'll need a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second. I think you owe me a cut now.
Ms. Brown, can you pick?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Ms. Brown?
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Beer permits, Ms. Brown?
We have a regular permit for an ownership change for a convenience store located at 2374 Old Fort Parkway. The applicant has met requirements for a permit and is recommended for approval pending final building and codes inspections.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, Ms. Brown.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Any bills to be paid?
No, sir.
Okay. Any other business before council?
I got two things right quick. Go ahead, Craig.
I was just going to say, when we next meet, go ahead.
Okay. Hey, Craig, can, at our workshop, can we talk about the firefighter's 14-step process? How effective it's been? Have we had any turnover rate or anything? And then the second one, food trucks. We keep, we keep talking about food trucks, but we've never given them a proper place to have food trucks around here. So one of the things that I talked about, that we can discuss, maybe the plaza or closing Vine Street. Once a month, they're doing something to that rate, because if we're talking about doing something, the bridge across Broad, we're going to need area for food trucks. So why don't we implement something now for food trucks?
Does Canonsburg still do their thing every Friday?
No, they're not, because it's closed. Yeah, so, just something to think about. We can talk about it at the workshop.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Tannen, did you have something else?
Oh, I was going to say that our next meeting is set for the March the 7th, and there'll be public hearings on that date, so we'll hold that date.
All right. And that's a regular meeting?
That's a regular meeting.
Okay.
And workshop on the 4th. And then workshop on the 14th. Right. Workshop on the 14th.
All right. Is there any other business to come before council? Hearing none, meetings adjourned.